I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of December 2nd, 2020. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. In order to meet the required social distancing protocols, we must limit the number of people inside the chambers. Staff is assisting individuals who are present and wish to testify on items on today's agenda by ensuring that each person has signed in. Staff will direct you into the chambers based on what item you are testifying on and your position on that item. Please note, we will only bring those attendees into the chambers for the agenda item they are interested in when that hearing begins. We are requiring attendees in the chambers to sit in a socially-distanced manner, six feet apart from other people not in your immediate group. If there are more than 25 people attending for a particular agenda item, staff will bring additional attendees into the chamber as people testify and then leave the chambers. Once you have testified, you should exit the chambers using the doors to the right, and then the next testifier can come up to the microphone and begin testifying. In addition, for the added protection of all those involved, the Planning Commission will be allowing testimony on agenda items by video conference for individuals who pre-registered with the Planning Department prior to today's hearing. This testimony will be taken following the completion of the live testimony for each item based on position. Based on estimations, we are staggering the times of various hearings over several hours. These times are identified in the parentheses on the agenda. We are encouraging attendees to arrive no more than 15 minutes before their scheduled hearing time. Please note that an agenda item will not begin before the time posted. In the event that the allocated hearing times go quicker than estimated, there will be breaks in the hearing. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are needed. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cellular telephone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of the meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. The Planning Commission action on all items on today's agenda is a recommendation to either the City Council or the County Board of Commissioners. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held November 18th, 2020.
So moved. Campbell?
Second. Edgerton?
Jerry?
Okay. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a public hearing unless there's a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request -- excuse me, request of a commission member. I will ask Jerry to read all of the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if anyone is willing to -- is wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, can you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you. Before I do that, I would note that Item 1.2A and 1.2B are being removed from the consent agenda today and scheduled for public hearing as there are individuals who have registered to testify remotely in opposition of these two items. First item is Item 1.1A, Annexation 20012 to annex approximately 21.45 acres of land and the associated change of zone 17030C from AG Agricultural District to R3 Planned Unit Development to expand the boundaries of the Wandering Creek PUD to add approximately 20.3 acres with residential and commercial areas along with associated waivers. These are both generally located at South 94th Street and Van Dorn Street. The next item that I'll call on the consent agenda is Item 1.3, Change of Zone 20033 from R4 Residential District to R6 Residential District on property generally located at 2300, 2310, and 2330 Y Street. And the final action on today's consent agenda is Item 1.4, Street Nally Vacation 20005 to vacate South 34th Street from Tree Line Drive South to its terminus generally located at South 34th Street and Tree Line Drive. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these items?
Doesn't look like it.
Are there any ex parte communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting the sites?
No.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any of these consent agenda items? If so, please stand and state. No one?
Okay. Entertainer motions.
I have approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Joy?
Here.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Becky, yes.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
We will go ahead and proceed to public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given the opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as part of the record, please provide that information to the clerk for distribution. Each person testifying should state their name and address, and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or to continue the public hearing. Jerry, please call the first item.
Okay, I'll call the two items together that are associated. Item 3.1A is Annexation 20013 to annex approximately 4.84 acres and adjacent right-of-way, including the remaining portion of Lot 122 and South 98th Street, and the associated change of zone 20035 from AG Agricultural District to H3 Highway Commercial District on property generally located at 8455 South 98th Street, and staff recommendation on both of these is conditional approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these items?
I don't see any.
Is there -- are there any ex parte communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting the sites?
Doesn't look like it. Steve?
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department. As Jerry noted, we have two items. Generally, where we are is located here on the west side of 98th Street, on the north side of Highway 2.
Just a second, Steve. It's not coming.
There we go. All right. So, west side of 98th Street, north side of Highway 2, the South Lake subdivision, which is a new subdivision with most of the lots are vacant at this point, is to the northwest. This area is inside of the city limits. On the south side of Highway 2 is the unincorporated community of Cheney, which is outside of the city limits. To the east and southeast is also outside of the city limits and is generally developed with acreage lots. This particular property is currently zoned as AG Agricultural. It was shown to be inside of the future city limits at some point, but if you will note, it is because of its topography and circumstances, it was not integrated into the development to the north. It's a good 20 feet or so below the development to the north and is an area where it would be -- actually is quite difficult to get sewer or water -- excuse me, to get sanitary sewer to it due to the topography. Being developed as one lot, they are able to get it actually a sewer line back up to Topher Boulevard to the north. So because of its particular circumstances with a lot of frontage on Highway 2 and resulting traffic noise and things that might come with that, it was really kind of a challenging spot for any residential development. There previously was a house on the site that had been removed, had been for sale for a number of years, and we had seen if there was any assisted living or anything that was interested in it, but generally found that there was not. So this particular applicant has come forward and has agreed to have a zoning agreement, and some of those conditions are included in the staff report, one of the conditions being that they will preserve the existing tree mass that's in about a 30-foot area along Highway 2, which does a lot to help with the entryway into Lincoln. We do anticipate that there'd be a spot for a sign there for any of the commercial uses that would be developing in this area if the change of zone were approved. With H3 Highway Commercial, it's generally in a spot where you don't want to have a lot of high-traffic generators there, a convenience store, fast-food restaurant, those type of things, because there's really not a good spot to have a very long turn lane into this point, into this lot. The applicant has agreed to put in a appropriate turn lane, center turn lane, into the site, and with all of the conditions that were listed in the staff report that would be in the zoning agreement when this goes forward to the City Council, the staff had recommended approval both of the annexation and of the change of zone. And so with that, would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I have a couple of questions based on some of the communication or correspondence we received, if I can just ask those now.
Sure.
And so we talked a little bit about the screening on the Highway 2 side. Some of the communications we received talked about significant tree removal from the site. I'm assuming that perhaps is in a different location, or perhaps that -- I'd like you to address that question.
Sure.
Generally, the site has quite a few trees on the property today, and other than the screen that is along Highway 2, the applicant, in order to develop it, was going to have to be able to remove most of the trees that were on the site. There is a line of evergreen trees, though, along the north property line, and that north property line, again, is 10 or so feet above the rest of this site, and as the houses to the northwest, of which there's just a few, are then again above that.
So those are the houses on Topher Boulevard, right?
Yeah, so here's Topher Boulevard, and so it is these trees that are along here, and Mike Eckert, the applicant, will be addressing what they are proposing now in terms of those trees and their preservation.
Great.
But it'd be just those trees along basically the north property line.
Thank you.
So, Steve, just to follow up on that, so the ones along Highway 2 on the, I guess it'd be east, no, west side, those will stay in place?
Correct. The ones that are along Highway 2 would stay in place, and then Mike Eckert will be addressing the ones that are along--
The back of the lots.
The back of the lots as well.
Okay.
Dennis, did you have a comment?
Steve, are there any, this would be long-term, future considerations, but are there any plans that you know of or desires to improve or make that Yankee Hill Road, Highway 2 intersection, and then the quick turnoff onto 98th Street to improve that in the future anyway? I see there's right-of-way available to do something, but has that been talked about? That's probably a state thing, isn't it?
A very good question. So generally, what you're asking about is just to the south of this, Yankee Hill Road bends and comes in at a 90-degree with Highway 2, and 98th Street then comes off of it. And no, there is not a specific plan for that intersection, but definitely Lincoln Transportation Utilities, that was one of the things that we asked them about, and they felt with the applicant is agreeing to dedicate additional right-of-way along 98th Street, that there was sufficient right-of-way in generally this location that we could go ahead and not ask for any additional right-of-way from this applicant.
Okay.
Because as you can tell, there is quite a bit of space. My map isn't -- there we go. That's a little bit better. So as you can see, as that intersection, we are fortunate to have quite a lot of right-of-way around it, so they felt like if we made it into a small, little, tight interchange or something in the future, because this will be transitioning from state Highway 2. Highway 2, when the South Beltway is done in a few years, actually moves to the south, and this becomes the city's street.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Steve? Okay, thank you. Mike, applicant?
My name is Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group. Here on behalf of Mark Lewis and the Lewis Dorostica Group, the developer, proposed developer of this site. We've also been working hand-in-hand with Roger Byrne, the existing owner, for some time on this piece of property. At least with Roger, Mark has put it under contract pending these zoning changes. I think Steve did a good job of highlighting kind of the unique issues of it. I want to go into a little more detail on that. So the site is one of a couple in town we have like this, where it just does sit quite a bit lower than we could gravity sewer. So obviously, in Topher Boulevard, there's gravity sewer, and I think the city was looking ahead to this piece on how to do, how to service it, and they did create kind of a joint pedestrian easement here as well as utility easement. And so this site was then going to be restricted. As you may know, we can do a forced main, lift station and forced main if it is a private ownership of a commercial property or perhaps multifamily. And so, in this case, commercial, but it does restrict them then to only being able to have one lot. We can't subdivide it. And so it kind of had those characteristics going into it, that it sat low, but a plan was there to force main the sewer up, and that is the plan that the applicant has, is to develop it all as one lot and do the buildings as leasehold. This demonstrates a little bit, too, that most of the walkout level of the lots here immediately adjacent is on this 1420 contour, and then the site goes 1410, 1400 down to 1390 by the road. This is a low-depression area, and that's just a spoil pile there. And so the site sits quite a bit lower than the adjacent neighborhood. So let's dive into that, too, quickly. This project, being an H3, not used permit district, the real teeth that the city's going to have is the zoning contract, and the first thing we did, as I always like to do when Mark was considering this piece, was to go in and talk to the city. And they had had extended discussions with the owner, Roger Byrne, about it over the past year or so, and Roger's had it listed for four years as a potential commercial property. And so planning was very clear that they would support this commercial on the condition that it remains on one lot and on the condition that it would preferably be a low-traffic generator. Well, that is exactly what Mark and his team have been looking for in southeast South Lincoln, where we just don't have a lot of unused commercial or even industrially-zoned pieces, that he's obviously a contractor, and he knows a lot of contractors that are dying for a space similar to the Trade Center or the stuff that Rick Kruger has off of 14th and Yankee Hill, where you've got a furnace and air company or a plumber or some, you know, those trades that need a little bit of an office, but primarily what they need is an office, a break room, a place to store equipment, a place for their guys to get the stuff, head out to the field, at the end of the day, come back in and check in. And so it's not going to really be a retail-driven thing at all. That is what we're saying, is this is going to be contractor services. So that was another important element. And so then we began some dialogue with the neighbors, and it's been a little bit slow-moving with the holiday, but as of last night, I was able to get some commitments that I've discussed with Steve, and I've discussed with Tyler Miles, who will speak here tonight, too. And Tyler is the one house that's been built adjacent to this, and so the two lots, let me just show you that, too. So Tyler's in this house, and then Dennis Lyons, the architect.
Mike, give us just one second. Go ahead.
There we go. So yeah, Tyler's in this house, Dennis Lyons, the architect, has a couple of these with his son is a home builder now, and then Rick Kruger owns the remainder of these, and I think Rick's still in several of these. And so I've talked with Rick, I've talked with Dennis, I've talked with Tyler. And so what we've agreed to do is, we were worried in my first correspondence with Tyler, I said, "I'm just not sure." But, and what I wasn't thinking was that, well, LES has already come in and put in, I was worried about our ability to get electrical behind the buildings. But there are pedestals there, and we've confirmed that most of the trees, I'm going to put up this exhibit, it's kind of an old one from Google Earth that is back when it was somewhat farmed around, but you can, so now we're looking towards Nebraska City, more or less. This is Highway 2, this is 98th. But this displays how there is a very nice, mature row of trees here, and even in farming days, this ground really dropped off right in here. These have all been graded to walkout lots like we showed earlier. So what we're going to do, what we're going to add to the zoning agreement, which the draft just came out yesterday, and again, you guys have been privy to that, but it's going to have to be finalized before we can go to council, because it talks about maintaining 30 feet against the highway and that setback. We have a 20-foot setback here, so what we've agreed to do is, all these trees are within 15 feet, and so we're going to reserve that all those trees within a 15-foot area of the property line will not be disturbed. That gives us five foot to at least get the footings in the building, and I think you may have seen, and I'll put this up, the layout, so we're back with north up. I drew in some contours there. This is still somewhat hypothetical, but I would say we're 70% towards where we think we're going to be. And so we can still get in and get footings done for these buildings, and it will be an expense to the developer. He's just going to have to do an extended footing as a retaining wall, in essence, on the back of the buildings, do that, backfill it, and then we'll capture the drainage coming through the buildings and do that. And what isn't going to go in the agreement, but I am pledging here personally, on behalf of Mark Lewis and myself, that what we're going to do for, because Tyler, I think you may have saw it in his stuff that he sent, that he is, and you can see it on the aerials, he's the only property that really has a gap. And so what we're going to do, code would say that we need to do 60% screening of an area 10-foot high, and you all know that means we could go in and plant a two-inch caliper crab tree that for 10 years won't provide much, but we're going to spade in a full-size coniferous tree there for him to provide better screening in that area where, and even on some of the older aerials, and I'll put this one up. This, again, is dated, but even back in the farming days, there was this gap, and so that's really backing up to Tyler's existing home. And so, and this is a shot off of 98th I wanted to show you for the height of the trees today. They're pretty tall, and we think we can preserve that. We think we can pull electrical services off those pedestals and hopefully get it to a point where it's satisfactory for everybody. I've communed that with Rick Kruger, too, because he does have existing lots he's still waiting to sell, but that was his only concern. And so, you know, we run into this a lot, where we have properties that do go commercial after a neighborhood has been started, and, you know, we've seen them, and a lot of them turn out well. There's the intersection of 84th and Old Cheney where some commercial was developed. You guys know many of them, the Knowles Project, that in the end end up being, trying to be as good a neighbor as they can, and that's our intent here. So, but again, it's a unique piece of land that we could bring on to the city tax rolls, do some needed contractor storage, single-story buildings, slab-on-grade, and provide that need for those contractors, make some good use of this space, and at the end of the day, you know, after construction's done, I think it should mold with the neighborhood, given particularly to that 20-foot drop in elevation. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Dennis?
So, the, can you put up the site plan with the building?
Yeah.
As I understand what you were saying, the grade change from the residential back-of-lot to walkout to the back of those two buildings, the building wall will actually retain, that's where you're going to hold that grade drop in that wall?
Correct.
You're not going to create another retaining wall behind there?
No.
The reason I ask that is I think that would get a little tricky in preserving those trees. I think to preserve the trees is the right thing to do, but as you know, to do that well, you have to have plenty of space. So did I interpret what you're saying correctly? I think that'll work, but is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we think it should. We had our surveyors go out, Dennis, and check most of the trunks of those cedars, and it is a single line versus the one out here on Highway was actually a triple line, but this was a single line of cedars. Roger, in the day, had an electrical fence in there, and we've since surveyed it. The pedestals are in, we went, observed it. Most of the trunks are seven to eight feet within the property line, and so we've also acknowledged, and we've sat down with Mark, we've got some flucks in here, too, where if these have to move a couple of feet for us--
Okay.
--in order for us to get that--
I just want to make sure that you're accounting for, and Dick can talk to this better than I can, but to account for the preservation of the trees, you need some space at that elevation of those trees.
Yeah, typically, you need that seven-to-eight-foot root area.
So the farther you can pull that grade--
Yep.
--back is better, so.
Yes. And so we've thought about that, too, and so I think that we want to, that's why we're going to do the 15-foot, too, Dennis, knowing that they're at eight. It gives us almost another eight, and then it gives us five feet to get that footing dug. Basically, it's just going to be more or less a stem wall, the building coming up on the rear. Backfill it when we're done. Probably put some area drains in there for the storm sewer, storm water, excuse me, to, you know, capture, because all those lots drain right towards us. That's another issue we're just going to contend with. But, so yeah, because we dropped from the 20 to the 10, 14, and 19, we figure most of this is going to be probably from the 90 to the 1400, and it's just up in this corner where we're going to have our biggest problems, and we may move these down. I will say, this did show detention here. Again, we think we'll probably end up with detention here. Further review shows that all this water comes down towards the highway, back under 98th, across Eloise's lot here. I've talked with Eloise about some drainage issues here, too, that she's having, and then goes to, actually, to Hidden Valley Golf Course and drains into Stevens Creek. So we've got a lot of design work to be done, but again, having that issue with the trees here in the zoning agreement makes it a concrete issue that we're going to be, have to abide with. So hopefully that lends some assurity to both city staff and the neighbors. So, hopefully, that lends some assurity to both city staff and the neighbors.
Dick?
Um, i- in one of the comments that we got, um, and I believe it's the gentleman that lives there now, um, he was worried about metal roofs. Do you have any idea yet what they're gonna do?
We, we don't. Um, they have done a similar project like this out in Grand Island, and they did have pitch roofs. And in conversations I've had with Mark Lewis, he says he anticipates that he will. I've talked to Tyler about that, and I, I, I've told him that we really don't wanna get into architectural review and, 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 um, issues like that, where we're committed to one thing or another. But, um, given the fact also that we're gonna be limited rear yards on those buildings, um, the pitch roof might be the best place to do a lot of the mechanical units, anyway. So, um, I, I can't
Right.
say for sure, but we're gonna try to take that into consideration.
Okay. Dennis?
But what will be the height of the roof, uh, roof compared to the floor elevation? Is, is, are these really tall buildings?
No, I think, uh, in the ones they've done in Grand Island, Dennis, there was, there were basically the twelve, well, the, the twelve-foot door, and then probably have two feet, so fourteen to fifteen, and two to three foot of truss space. So, um, so if they're at a fourteen-hundred, and that puts them at a fourteen, fifteen, you know.
Fifteen to twenty.
Right, rows line, yeah. But, single-story, but they really will need to get that, at least that twelve-foot overhead door. Doors which will face the interior of the project.
Okay.
Lorenzo, did you have a?
So, you mentioned that it's gonna be primarily off of space with, uh, with storage. Based on the plan, what kind of, um, storage do you see it, uh, being? Is it equipment, vehicles?
Yeah. So, the contractor services is, is, is defined, as I mentioned earlier, basically where you have a business that needs to store their inventory of be it air conditioners or plumbing pipe or wood, uh, if there's a framer. Um, and so, uh, it, 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 it wouldn't, it wouldn't be just storage for rent for the general public. It would be a contractor who has his office there, his place of business is addressed there, and it's for his, storage related to his business. So, if that, if that makes sense.
It does. Um, but if it was a construction business, as an example, are you having lifts there? Um, but it sounds like it's just primarily in- inventory for plumbing services?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
So, contractor services is actually, I, I, I must admit, I did not look up the, the table and, and the commercial services use table. The contractor services is part of the, is it, is a label within that table. Is that correct?
Yeah.
It's a defined term?
It's actually under the heavy, something, yeah, heavy commercial uses, so. But it is, I mean, we know we're definitely going in that direction because there's tremendous demand. Um, I, I think the other question Tyler asked is we anticipate that it will build out in phases, although he's got enough interest that we anticipate probably at least two or three buildings will go immediately. So.
Other questions for Mike?
Yeah. Mike, on that, uh, if you pull that one that you had for Dennis with the buildings on it, the one that, uh, you're looking at down at the, uh, at the corner, uh, where you said that's gonna be detention, would you move that building then up to, with the other two?
Yes, we probably would. It may not fit in the same size there.
Right.
But more than likely where that proposed detention, whoops, was at. Um, and that, and I, you know, it has got good screening down to the end there. Uh, some of these aerial photos are a little older, but I think we'd be, there's just the corner. These lots begin to turn and then back to Ninety-Eighth, so.
Mm-hmm.
But yes.
Okay.
In all likelihood, we still wanna get around this. I think we're at, right around about fifty-five thousand total square foot possible that we could park, which is usually what drives it, as you know, the ability to park, get the parking ratios for that much square foot of building.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Other questions for Mike? Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. All right, we will go ahead and take testimony in support of this application now. And just as a reminder, we are talking about both applications, both Annexation Two Zero Zero One Three and the Change of Zone Two Zero Zero Three Five. Um, is there any testimony in support? All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and take any testimony in opposition. Welcome. Please come forward and give us your name and address first.
Uh, good afternoon. I'm Tyler Miles. I live at Nine Six Eight Five Tofer Boulevard. I appreciate your time today and your willingness to hear an alternate point of view on this project. Uh, a week ago, we received, uh, a letter in the mail, obviously provided by the Planning Commission. We appreciate that. Uh, heads up and notice, uh, immediately began our dialogue with all people within equity within this, uh, planning, uh, activity. So, one, reached out to Kruger Development, which is currently the HOA. Obviously, is not fully established with a, um, property owners, uh, as an HOA yet, cause there's still property to be developed, engaged with the property owner that has the two lots next door. Uh, also, uh, adjacent neighbors that were not, uh, a part of the initial notification of this property change. I then immediately reached out to Mr. Eckert to start asking some basic questions, uh, basic interrogatives to understand, what are the planning factors in consideration? That's when he provided the initial site plan. And I do have to say, Mr. Eckert was great in providing, uh, detail and responses to the question in a timely manner. Um, things, things have changed recently, within the last, uh, hour since arriving here. Initially, my wife and I felt that the communication was dismissive in, in a way, saying, "Well, we're just gonna rip out the trees. We're gonna take all of this out," and it's just, that's a part of building commercial properties. And so, that brought and prompted a, a response to basically go through the L-Plan Twenty Forty, which I appreciate the Planning Commission's contributions to that, because it gives us as citizens an understanding and guidelines to what we can expect out of this relationship that we have, both citizens, developers, a- and, and the city. And so, as I started to go through that more in detail, started to realize how much of an impact this could have. As a resident of Lincoln, since I was two years old, I do believe in this city, and I believe that we should have a beautiful city. There's a lot of efforts across the city that have been great. Village Gardens, for one, that integrates more of a, uh, an approach that's an aesthetically pleasing approach to its citizens. And so, that's where my question started with the trees and screens, and what he's presented today is a great way to step forward to understand that, yes, it does matter, and that, you know, the, the people that live and that will breathe this for the next thirty years, uh, will want that screening to, to, to remain in place and to, to protect that visual aesthetics and the life that we live every day. As I've looked forward, and I looked at the screening, and the way L-Plan Twenty Forty, um, has an approach, is the key entryways into the city are very important. And what does that provide the city when a newcomer comes to Lincoln? And as you drive in from the east to the west on Highway Two, as you look across, on the left side of the street is locket storage. And so, you see these big glaring metal roofs, these, these, these bright, um, almost concrete-colored pictures. And so, one can only imagine, based on these email communications with the developer, that we're gonna see the same thing get put in right next door. And is that truly the first entry gateway point to, to the city that we want? Now, do I think today he's, he's laid out a much better solution? Or more conversation to say, "How do we include that?" Those hundred-year-old trees that are around that existing pond that they drained two months ago? Those are things that are gonna break up the skyline across all those houses that are in the back. So, if we take all of these trees out, the hundred-and-ten-plus trees that I counted, when we come across that area, all you're gonna see is the back of houses and, and, and more metal buildings. All I ask is that, we as a city come together to say, "Let's go with something more aesthetically pleasing. Let's stick with the screening agreements as, as we've kind of discussed here, and let's have a more visual, uh, a better visual as people enter into our city along that corridor." I appreciate everyone's time today, and I look forward to future engagements on this. This is my first time dabbling in this, and, and I really do appreciate it. I've learned a lot more about developments, H-three commercial districts, than I probably really want to or need to. Um, but that's what's important here. I just wanna make sure that we're working together as a team, as a community, that we can come to these agreements and that people are held to those standards. Cause we, as a city, deserve to have a community which is visually pleasing, also works with the homeowners, so it doesn't impact them emotionally, financially, and aesthetically, as they live their lives in this city. That being said, you have the documents that I submitted. I hope that's appreciated. I hope that we can continue this dialogue. That is my opposition. I hope that we can work together to make sure that the screening stays in place, that we can work as a, as a team to ensure that aesthetically, as we build these buildings, that it's just not another locket storage on the, on the west side. And furthermore, agreements are just agreements. I don't want them to just level that lot and then say, "Well, we were going to build these buildings, but now we just have a flat, flat lot and no trees." I appreciate your time today. Thank you. Uh, I won't waste any more of it.
Wow, we, we probably have some questions for you, sir. That's okay.
That's as new for me.
Commissioner Campbell, do you want to start?
So, you are comfortable with if they leave that north row of cedars and then along the highway, the trees?
I, I, I am comfortable with that, cause that is, one, that's a step that wasn't approached until, uh, fifteen minutes prior to this hearing. So, it is new information to me, cause initially, I wanted to come in full opposition to the proposed plan. I think that cedar, line of cedar trees will help encourage the people to actually purchase the lots and build a home, and I think that is something that could, uh, um, could be of value. Now, would I like to see their design incorporate the existing pond and those hundred-year-old trees? Mr. Mark Lewis is, is, is familiar with this. The Lincoln Journal Star did an article on him in Twenty Fourteen, where he pop, brought, bought the, one of the last lots in the Firethorne Golf Course. The article talks about how he seamlessly integrated that plot or that, that, um, exact land into where, into the design and took that deliberate thought. I'd like to see that deliberate thought applied to a commercial spot. If it applies to his neighborhood, and he's concerned about the aesthetics of his own home within a lot of a golf course, I think he could be concerned about other citizens who've, who've worked hard to buy property in that area.
Other questions at all? Okay, very good, Mr. Miles. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Any other testimony in opposition?
I believe we do have, um, a couple individuals on, uh, that wanna video conference and some.
Very good.
Ms. Williams, your app?
All right, welcome. Please go ahead and begin your testimony.
Hi, thank you, and I also submitted written opposition, uh, last evening. My name is Helen Colasimo, and I'm joined by my husband, Dr. Matthew Barlow. We live at Eighty-One Twenty, South Ninety-seventh Street, which is directly north of this property.
Into the chamber?
Yeah. Um, and actually, is basically the same road as Tofer Boulevard. It just changes name as the road curves around. Um, we appreciate the ability to testify, um, here today. This is our first time in such an endeavor as well. Um, we have a slightly different perspective than, um, Tyler, because we bought our house last year from out of state. I actually, we put an offer on the house without having physically seen it. So, um, we do present a different kind of aspect of a homebuyer in a new neighborhood in Lincoln, coming from out of state. Um, but I do wanna specifically highlight, um, that we're not provided the public mailing notice. We are within no more than two-tenths of a mile of this property. If I walk out my backyard, I'm directly on Ninety-Eighth Street. I can see the work that's been done in terms of the utilities, uh, you know, as they're laying line for aloe. I, I can see all that at Ninety-Eighth Street. I can see Highway Two from my back porch. I can see Highway Two from my front porch as well, um, and the, and the trees in question. So, you know, I think Tyler did an excellent job summarizing it. If he had not, um, come around the neighborhood, we would have been completely unaware. We were not part of the public notice, and I only discovered your website and all the information last night, sometime between nine PM and two AM, when I finished up reading through everything. So, um, if I'm slightly unprepared, it's because I only started looking at this yesterday night. Um, but we just are, our concerns are very similar to that already presented. We're very concerned about the property values. I think one of the other comments in opposition noted that the property values, um, for these houses is upwards of five-hundred thousand dollars. Our house was over six-hundred thousand dollars. Um, part of the reason we put an offer on a house we had not set foot in is because I checked Google Street View. I looked at what was on Highway Two. I took that into consideration. Um, you know, having agricultural views and acreage directly across from me. I work from home. He works from home quite frequently. I spend sometimes twenty hours a day in my home office, looking out at Ninety-Eighth Street, um, and across into the acreage that's across Ninety-Eighth Street from our house. So, we are just very concerned about not only the property values, um, but also the proposed changes to the road. I think it's already been mentioned. I just wanna underscore, it's not exactly the best road conditions there. I'm not a hundred percent sure how adding turn lanes or whatever else might be done, not my area of expertise, will affect that area of Ninety-Eighth Street. I do hear Highway Two from my house. Um, any removing of trees affects that. Um, you know, I don't know if you wanna add anything else?
So, yeah, I mean, I just wanna just quickly reiterate, the, our biggest concerns are, again, much like Tyler said, aesthetics of the neighborhood, property values, the ability to sell the remaining lots, both connected to or, or adjacent to the proposed addition and just along Highway Two, and between, uh, Ninety-Eighth Street, um, you know, the bottom half of, of our, our neighborhood. We wanna make sure that, that is, um, aesthetically pleasing to make sure that our neighborhood, you know, can grow and, and do the things that we, we'd like to see in this neighborhood. And, well, again, the, the road condition is, um, you know, with, you know, additional traffic, there's already lots of commercial property, uh, vehicles. So, you know, tree removal companies and dump trucks and all sorts of, uh, you know, large vehicles going down the road, and adding in, um, a
Contractor service.
Contractor services could increase that, and we just, you know, wanna make sure that it's safe, not just for, uh, the people on the road, but for, for anybody traveling, um, up and down Ninety-Eighth Street.
And I'm actually surprised you haven't heard from residents who did get notice, who live across Ninety-Eighth Street. You know, they're the type of people in this, in my neighborhood and that neighborhood across the way that have, you know, "Please slow down. Children live here" signs.
Tractors going down the road.
Yeah, I mean, everything, everything from major, huge farm equipment going one mile per hour to tree service vehicles with hitch, to eighteen-wheelers sometimes, will use Ninety-Eighth Street as a, a shortcut. But, for the most part, you know, the rural nature of the aesthetics of our neighborhood is still in place. So, any change to that, you know, when we take a walk around our neighborhood, we can see the storage lot across Highway Two. I can see the stoplight, for the time being, a house is on, or construction across the street, directly, you know, before you to the Walmart on Highway Two. So, any sort of additional commercial development is of concern.
Yeah.
Okay, give me just one second to ask the commissioners if there are any questions for you.
Right.
Commissioner Campbell?
Um, are you comfortable with, uh, the trees remaining on the north side and then along Highway Two?
Um, comfortable? Yes, but I, I, I wanna make it clear that I, my concern is that, uh, sub-subcontractor accidents happen and the trees get removed. Uh, through no fault, it just, you know, things happen. And, you know, as, as presented here, I think we are, or, or, you know, we prefer to keep it as it is, but we're, we were, I think, comfortable with the proposal as it stated, but, uh, concerned that it won't, you know, what, you know, best intentions are great, but, but things might happen, and, and I'd be, be concerned that trees get accidentally removed, and, and then, well, it, it's too late once they're gone.
Indicated that they were willing to add a, uh, a, another requirement of the, uh, development, if this were to go through, and that they would also then fill in the hole, uh, where there, the trees are missing. Um, if I'm picturing your lot correctly, it would be good if, um, if on that north line of, um, of, uh, the trees, if they, if added some at that end where it's open, too. And that would give, that would give you a
Because that's when we go out at the back of our house on our deck and look south, we can see that north edge of the property, and yes, uh, keeping or, or, or putting new trees in and making sure that, um, aesthetically, the, the trees are there would be, be very important for us.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I believe we have one more testifier?
Um, I don't believe so.
No, I'm sorry. Okay. That was the two. Okay, beautiful, beautiful. Any other testimony in opposition at all? Okay, we'll come back with staff questions for Steve. Commissioner Campbell?
Steve, um, with what, um, Mike Eckert was talking about of adding another requirement, uh, have you and he had time to work out what that is? Or is that something that will, that we should assume would get added when, when it goes to the council?
Uh, yes, at, at this point going forward, it will go forward with, uh, an additional condition that the
that the trees in the northern 15 feet would remain.
And could you add to that, that any of the holes would be filled in? And should a tree die, that it would be replaced?
Yeah, I think we could also add in the, behind the one lot that was discussed. Let me get this back up. Oh, here we go. Sorry, that as you zoom in, this one's a little blurry. That behind this one lot there, Mike Eckert had offered to put in a tree in behind here. Over on this northern end, I just wanted to point out, the last testifiers are on this house in here. There, in the future, there will be eight other houses in between them in this property. So any additional trees on the far eastern end, there'll be a whole bunch of houses and things in between them and they may plant trees and, you know, fences and everything else as well as their own. So I'm not sure any screening for them would make a difference one way or the other once all the other lots are developed in between.
But those two lots that Dennis Lyon wrote about, they are right, they're down two from the, from-
Yeah, maybe this one will be.
I thought there was one open lot in between them and then the next two were Lyon's.
Yeah, so Dennis Lyon's lots are these two. And really there's a lot of existing screening there. It's one gap right in here where Mike was talking about that he would be fine with replacing the tree that was in that one gap.
Yeah, and if possible, if they were willing, I think if they did add a couple of trees down on that east end.
On this end, you're saying?
Yeah, the west end, sorry.
Or on the west?
Oh, no, no, no. I'm sorry, it is east end. That, that would help with the sale of those lots that are right on the corners, on the turn there, on the curb.
And that's certainly something you can ask, talk to Mike about in terms of that end. But my understanding is now is that maybe the northern 15 feet plus putting in one additional tree in this area and here where there is a gap, which truly otherwise would not have been required because the trees would have met the screening requirement.
Mike, how is, how will that be written in the agreement to maintain those trees? Is there language like they will be preserved or they will remain or?
Well, we'll have to work with our-
The great city attorney's office on that typically preserved would be the language.
And I would note, when you had, previously had Stevens Creek Villas, and that was at 95th and Adams, that had a tree preservation part of it as well. That was also a Mike Eckert project. And as was mentioned, one of the trees did in the grading of the property get accidentally removed. And trust us, we heard about it. City Council heard about it. Mike Eckert heard about it and they went out and made amends for that one tree being removed. So I have every firm belief that if something were to go wrong in some of the trees, we, since we're not out there every day, we would definitely hear about it from neighbors that, oh, hold it, that 15-foot, something happened in there. And we'd be contacted to see if it got done, corrected. And in the case of Stevens Creek Villas, it did.
Other questions for Steve?
And then the requirement for the turning lane, could you just indicate on the aerial where that's going to be?
Yes, generally it's we're asking to be, have it put on about as far north as possible. Yes, a southbound, right-hand turn lane into the site and then a center turn lane. So people coming from the south off of Highway 2 can turn left into the site.
And perhaps this was a question I should have asked earlier, but given the number of homes to the north, I heard that potential retaining sort of wall be put prior to or behind that property. What risk is there for erosion, being that there is, you know, a lower graded property in that area?
Well, overall, the applicant, one of the conditions is that they have to submit a grading and drainage plan to the satisfaction of Lincoln Transportation Utilities Waterstead Division. So they will be looking at a grading plan when more detail is, Mike is, you know, basically done with the site plan and can provide a more detailed grading plan. So that will be certainly something that'll be looked at because I would take it in the 15 feet. Generally, if they're preserving the trees, we're hoping they're preserving the grass and that type of thing to help with not having erosion on the bank as well.
Any last questions? All right, very good. Thank you, Steve. Mike, if you'd like to come back up?
Yeah, so a couple of things real fast. I think Steve did mention on the folks that did call in, they are quite a bit north. They're, I think I measured it this morning, 650 feet. So they're actually outside of the notification area. And not to say that there isn't some sort of an impact, but they will have eight more houses, eight more backyards with trees and other things over time that will come in there. I think the only other thing I want to mention on their comments is, is that we all need to realize, or that, you know, I think all these neighbors out here should know that 98th is a mile section road. It is a major arterial. It will someday be a four-lane road with a center turn lane. And so, and let me, let me just get back to some end questions here. I'll put this exhibit back up and I drew, we are, Commissioner Campbell, in terms of that corner up here, I think the aerial doesn't show it very well, but what I drew in red here was the area that we will be deeding as public right-of-way to. So we're going to be a little bit limited up there. This is the picture that I think does a good job. So there is actually more volunteer trees that have grown over time on this. So this is, this is the Dennis Lyon lots here. And here's the fencing and the trees. And so I think when we give our right-of-way, we're going to be pretty close to that existing line. But again, we're happy to have the language in there that says preserved and make sure we take care of it. And as Steve said, we, you know, we try hard. The other project he mentioned, you know, by the time it trickles from the developer to the contractor, did the guy run in the backhoe? But we got that reconciled. It took a Sunday afternoon meeting, but we did it and that's how we like to do business. So, and lastly, I just want to somewhat apologize to Tyler, who, as he mentioned, probably earned a minor degree in community and regional planning during his research on this project. And my apology is, is that with the holiday and Mark was out of town, my ability to get him some of the feedback that didn't come until, to me, to get ironed out last night and convey to him this morning. But his efforts were not in vain. It has spurred us to look harder at the site in terms of the tree removal now. And I understand his concern about the ones in the internal, there are cottonwoods. They are mainly trees that have grown in over time. We will, we will need to make, remove those in order to do the site plan that I showed you. But we'll keep everything on the perimeter. And I, I think the other thing that we'll get out of this at the end is maybe having that detention cell, some green space down there on the corner too, in terms of the entryway corridor. So with that, I appreciate your attention to this matter and be happy to answer any other questions.
Lorenzo, did you have a question earlier?
They got to answer them.
Okay, perfect. Dick?
My, just a point of knowledge. We used to think roots would go deep on plant material. And over the research over the last 20-some years, finds that about two to three feet is the maximum depth on the root system. But they go out up to two to three times the height of the tree. So the less change of grade they can do, even in getting those retaining back walls in, the better off they'll be.
Yeah, yeah, they definitely spread. They don't go as deep as people usually thought and depending on the tree. As Tyler and I discussed, the spruces or the cedars, excuse me, are not the most aesthetically pleasing tree, but they're very resilient. So, but we'll certainly take that in caution during, during the construction.
And soil should not be added on top?
No.
It should remain at the present grade?
In fact, I mean, we try to always be careful of just the compaction issue of the roots too. Yeah, so I, Derek, our engineer on this project is already starting to garner his ideas on how we can get those footings poured with minimal impact, so.
Great, thank you.
Other questions for Mike? Okay, very good. Thank you. I entertain a motion?
I'll move to close the public hearing. Edgerton?
Second, Joy.
Jerry, when you're ready?
Okay, Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beck, yes?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Jerry, for clarif-, I'm sorry.
When a clarification? Do we need to, with a motion, mention an additional condition?
Well, hold on just one moment, Dick, because I'd like to back up maybe even a step further. Jerry, our motion to close the public hearing, would you like us to do that per item? Or can we do it on both?
Well, no, since we had just one public hearing for both, that's fine. Thank you.
And then Commissioner Campbell, if you would like to add something down the road, we can do that once we have a motion to do so. So let's go ahead and-
I would move to approve this annexation and also the-
Well, we need to do it.
One at a time. Do you want to start with the annexation, Dick?
I'm sorry?
Do you want to start with annexation two zero zero one?
I'd go back to the other one. The, it is the, yeah, the annexation is the one is first, yeah. So that's what I'm moving now.
Okay, is there a second to that? Annexation of two zero zero one three?
Second, Edgerton.
Okay, discussion?
I'll, I can say something.
Okay.
I'll make my comments for both. I think that's okay to do. So the annexation makes perfect sense to me. To me, that's not controversial at all. It meets all of our criteria that we've used in the past to annex property. So that's, that's pretty straightforward. Change of zone, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote to support that motion when we get to it. But my comments about change of zone is that I was less sure about that when I was reading through the staff report. But Mike, I really appreciate your reaching out. And Tyler, you guys, even though it doesn't sound like you worked as, maybe as much as you would have liked, I think there'll be opportunities coming up to do that, to fine-tune this stuff. But I think, Mike, your ability to add the preservation of these trees is really a big deal, a really big deal. And I'm very comfortable with where we're at with this. So basically, when you take into account the grade change, the grade drop, and the preservation of the trees, this property is really difficult to be used basically any other way, in my opinion, than doing this change of zone. I think is a really important thing to do. And we've had, we've had previous projects where we've had these kinds of little pieces of property that are really difficult to develop. And so I think this is a good use. I think it will fit actually very well as a piece to an entryway process or an entryway precision, or not precision, but procession. But I also think that, you know, 50 or 60 years down the road, this won't be an entryway to Lincoln. I think that's another important comment to make is that whether we're talking about Highway 2 not being Highway 2 in the future or what will likely happen as Stevens Creek continues to develop with our utilities, the residential growth that will happen east of 98th. I think this use will fit for a long time in a good way. So those are my comments about annexation and then also the change of zone. Thanks.
Other comments at all from anyone on both?
I'll just echo what Dennis said. I mean, I also had some concerns as I was reading through the report as well as the folks who came forward with their concerns. And really I starred and circled, can we include additional screening requirements in the zoning agreement? And here we come to the meeting and that's already been taken care of. I appreciate the fact that as citizens who are, who are involved and engaged in the process have brought that forward, that the parties were all amenable to how can we bring this so that, so that it works from both sides. And I'm very happy about the fact that the, the parties were amenable to figuring out how best to put that into, into the process. So thank you for that and I will be supporting both motions as well.
Any other comments?
Can I say one more thing? Tyler, I think that you have a future as a planning commissioner. Your comments were really great. I mean, I mean sincerely, they were really good. I, for you to talk like that's a really great thing. Thanks.
And I will, I would like to echo Dennis's comments, Mr. Miles. Your, your presentation here was astounding and I think a good example for those that want to come and testify in a public hearing. It was great, so thank you. And as you mentioned in your testimony, sir, the guiding principles of a comprehensive plan are a contract between all parties involved in some way, shape or form. And you are now entering into a situation where you will be the eyes and ears on the ground for, for this development going forward. And I think everyone, well, I don't know, I will speak for myself when I say, I have every expectation that you will ensure that what has been agreed upon is what actually comes to fruition in the future. And I'm very grateful that you are there to oversee and watch as Mike and Mr. and Mark Lewis continue on with their work, developing a parcel that I think makes a lot of sense to develop in the way that they're doing it. And I think that the, the development that we're seeing here is actually a pretty decent development to live next to in comparison to what other developments you might have had to live next to. I think the impact will be really minimal when everything is said and done to everyone. I think the worst case is that you might have some, some people throwing around tools at eight or nine o'clock during the summer nights as they're finishing up work. But I think that's, that's going to be the crux of it all. And I think that the trees preservation, both adjacent to your lots, but also the tree preservation along what is currently Highway 2, in the long term also really probably prevents additional redevelopment of the site because sightlines are really important to a higher intensity use. And with those sightlines from Highway, currently Highway 2 forever preserved by a tree mass, my guess is that it won't be as nearly as an intensive use as it could be along Highway 2, even in the long term, probably long after you're gone. So I will vote in support and let's move forward, Jerry.
Okay, this is for the conditional approval of annexation two zero zero one three. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beck, yes?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
I would then make a motion, Chairman Beck, yes, to approve the change of zone two zero zero three five.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Second, Joy.
And then I would like to offer an amendment that another condition be added to the agreement that the north line of trees be maintained and any gaps filled in to preserve the screen for the residential neighbors to the north.
And Dick, just for clarification, are we talking about just Mr. Miles's lot? Or are we also talking about Mr. Lyon's lots as well?
If it's needed, yeah, I'm talking the entire north, wherever it would be needed to offer protection to the residential lots.
Okay.
Second, Joy.
Second on Joy? Any further discussion on that? No?
I would, I'd just say that, I want to go back and I think Ron Eckert really brought, brought forth, sorry, Mike, really brought forth really a working element and the number of people that you've contacted and worked with just in the 24 hours to bring this resolution. When I first read your packet of information and such, yeah, I had great concerns about, about how it was going to happen. But based upon what I'm hearing you guys both willing to look at and to get done, makes a great deal of difference. makes a great deal of difference, in my opinion. So I congratulate both of you for your work.
Any other comments? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on that.
If we're on the amendment first.
Yep, we're voting on the amendment first.
I'm just going to read it back in general and we'll have law, actually.
I just want to make sure Tim is okay with what we have. Okay. You want to read it back, though, Jerry?
Sure. This is to add a condition whereby the trees along the north line be maintained and the gaps be filled in for the residential neighbors to the north.
Okay, it looks like Tim's okay with that. I think we're ready for a vote.
Okay. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beck, yes.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
That, that's the amendment.
Yes, that is the amendment.
Yeah.
Now on the main motion?
On the main motion, as.
As amended.
As amended. Okay. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beck, yes.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
All right.
Okay. Next item under public hearing is item four point one, text amendment two zero zero seven, two zero 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 seven, to amend Article four point zero zero five eight of Lincoln or Lancaster County zoning regulations relating to farm winery to allow craft brewery as an accessory to a farm winery. Staff recommendation is for approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed?
No, doesn't look like it.
All right, Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department. So on this text amendment, which is to the county zoning regulations versus the city zoning regulations, today, a farm winery is a conditional use, meaning if you meet certain conditions, you can go ahead and have a farm winery in AG agricultural zoning, which is the predominant zoning throughout the county. So generally, a farm winery was looked at as something that is generally appropriate out in a, in a rural area and is something that is typically found out in a rural area. You have large areas where the grapes are growing and that's typically where you will find the wineries and people liking to go out and sample the wines or have various events out at the, at the vineyard as well. So, and it has certain conditions in terms of this, this scale so that you might also be addressing what the impact of that winery is on adjacent uses. So the applicant, who is available via Zoom, Dale Lillihorn, he has a winery, an existing winery that is for sale. And over the summer noted that several people who contacted him asked, does Lancaster County allow accessory beer sales with the winery? And then the answer was no. And so this text amendment is to allow accessory craft beer sales so that somebody could do brewing as well as also have the, the winery. But the brewing would be accessory. So as it is set up, it is a subset within farm winery to allow the microbrewing. And the reason it is within the farm winery versus a separate use is that mostly our experience with the microbrewers is that they often run at a very different scale and type of operation. They're often looking for commercial buildings. They want to have loading docks. They want to have canning areas or bottling areas. And there's a much higher volume of sales when somebody's trying to do a freestanding microbrewery. And typically, all of our requests have been for people looking to be inside of the city. They're looking for a high traffic count as well as because they're going to have some truck deliveries and keg sales and all the rest of that. So we were trying to address this, yeah, okay, it makes sense that people who go out to a winery, maybe not every person that's coming along on the party likes to have wine. So it's nice to have perhaps an alternative there. And particularly if it's something that's brewed on the site. But we're trying to manage, though, that it is not become the main thing on the site. So it is a, in this case, one of the conditions is that the beer sales be no more than twenty-five percent of the wine sales. That helps keep that it is secondary to the, to the wine sales. So that, yes, you could have a brewery on site, but it's going to be probably at a much smaller scale than somebody who's trying to do it as their primary business and has a lot of truck traffic coming and going. So this would allow somebody not only to sell it on site, but let's say it becomes a little popular, they could also sell it offsite in stores or bars in Lincoln or, or anywhere in Nebraska or the, or the state. So you'll note in the text amendment, there's actually quite a lot of striking out and underlining. That was simply when the county attorney looked at it. They rearranged some of the sections to, to put them in a slightly different order. But we don't think that any of the farm winery conditions, such as they have to produce a minimum of five hundred gallons or no more than fifty thousand gallons a year, those were already the conditions that were in there. They're underlined just simply because they've been moved from one section to another. But those are not new conditions for the farm winery. So all of the conditions, basically, the farm winery remain the same. The main change is that you can now have some accessory beer sales for, for sales that you had on site. And it lists what kind of license you would need to have in terms of having a microbrewery. Also adds then a few new definitions to what is beer. So we have a definition for what is beer and what is wine. And use the state definition that a microbrewery should produce a maximum of twenty thousand barrels of beer a year, which is quite a lot, actually, but keeps it from being the scale of Boulevard or Budweiser or, or something like that. So I'd be happy to take any questions, but we also have the applicant who will be testifying by Zoom as well.
Questions for Steve?
I just, I just have one question.
Go ahead.
The twenty-five percent of gross sales, the, the condition states, upon request of the county, the farm winery shall provide sales receipts for the past six months. I'm just curious, who at the county would request that? I mean, what's the area or how does that, how is that policed?
Typically, the requests either first come into the Planning Department or come into Building and Safety. And so I, I think we would first look into on our own, is there some basis for this complaint versus just it's a, we sometimes get complaints that when we look into it, don't really seem to have much basis. But yes, if you go to the winery's website and you see that it's mostly a listing of fifteen different beers and very little mention of the wine, then I think it could either be the county attorney's office, if we felt necessary, sends them a letter saying, we have some reasons to ask. So we're asking you now to produce the sales receipts for both your beer and your wine for the last six months.
Thank you.
Dennis?
Steve, was there any reason why an accessory use like this wasn't part of the original text? I mean, was it just something you didn't think would come up?
Until this summer, we had never had anyone ask about having beer sales, a microbrewery with a farm winery. As I mentioned, almost every single one of them is, is looking to locate within the city. Yes, there are farm products, hops and things used in beer. But typically, they're not looking to locate out in a, in a rural setting. They're wanting to be in a, in the city.
Okay.
The twenty-five percent, is that based on what researcher? Why did we pick twenty-five percent?
We were simply trying to keep it to being accessory, to be in a minor portion of it. And so when we looked at some of the other conditions, like we also have alcohol sales in the city zoning ordinance in restaurants, and how do you define what's the, you know, it's something typically in that range versus it being a fifty-fifty proposition where it's nearly the main thing that's going on. We felt having it be a quarter was something that kept it clearly accessory, secondary to the main thing that's going on, which is the winery.
So we could always look at that in the future if we got a lot of demand?
Yes, again, for the moment, we don't, the applicant is actually the winery, not somebody who's looking to do this operation. So I also anticipate it's possible that once somebody starts operating for a while, they may come back and say, well, I need to tweak A or B in, in this as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
And this is by dollar volume?
Yes, it would be sales.
Yeah.
Not gallons, because actually on beer sales, you have a lot more beer volume.
Right.
But it's a lesser dollar amount. So we didn't want to do it by, by gallons because gallons could actually be lopsided where you might actually have more gallons sold, but it's clearly still a lesser sales volume.
And then, Steve, so this would, correct me if I'm wrong here, I'm not very familiar with farm wineries. But, so this would not open up the opportunity, you mentioned Boulevard, for example, or Budweiser. This would not open up the opportunity for a farm winery to sell those products in addition to, it, it's only limited to the craft beer that's being produced on the side.
Yes, and that's why the license type was listed. Because we're also not wanting to have the farm wineries basically become a bar or a tavern. That's a different liquor license where you can offer than a wide variety. So in this case, you could offer wines and you could also offer your beer.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Steve? All right, very good. And it sounds like we have the applicant on Zoom? Yes.
Yeah.
All right, very good. Dale, I don't know if you can hear me, but if you can, you can, you can start with your testimony if you'd like, sir. Dale, are you there? We're going to take one second here to see if we can't get the applicant on.
Are you hearing me?
Dale, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes.
Beautiful. Dale, if you'd like to go ahead and begin your testimony, we are, we can hear you, sir.
Thank you. I don't have a lot of testimony. I pretty much stated what I needed in the letter for application. I'm not really interested in opening the microbrewery, but I'm trying to sell my winery so I can retire. And most, all of my applicants, prospective buyers, have stated as soon as they find out they cannot have beer in Lancaster County, they are no longer interested. So with this, gives them an opportunity to, if they want to expand the winery, they can put the microbrewery in.
Need for the other planning commissioners to ask you any questions? So let me see if they have any questions for you, sir. I think we don't. So thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and move on to other testimony, Dale, but I want you to stick around if you would, please. All right, we will go ahead and see if we have any testimony in support. Seeing none. Then we're going to go ahead and see if we have any testimony in opposition. Seeing none. Do we have any staff questions? All right, seeing no staff questions, do we have any other questions for the applicant? Dale, would, do you have anything else you'd like to add, sir? I want to give you the opportunity, we don't have any additional questions for you, but this is your opportunity to add anything else you'd like to.
I don't think I have anything I need to add right now. Thank you.
Move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second, Joy.
Jerry, when you're ready.
Okay, this is closing the public hearing on text amendment two zero 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 seven. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beck, yes.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
I would then move to approve text amendment two zero 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 seven.
There a second?
Second, Joy.
Discussion?
Okay. Oh, sorry.
All right, hold on, just one second, Jerry.
This, this just makes a lot of common sense. And I agree, there are people that go out to the wine tasting areas and, and would rather have a beer. So it's, it's, I think it's very compatible.
Yeah. I, go ahead.
No, I agree.
Yeah, I would just agree with Commissioner Campbell's comments and, you know, also going down the road. Maybe as these things progress, we might see someone who's wanting to distill liquor on site too in this sort of setting, and, and that could be exciting as well. So I too will vote in support. Any other comments? All right, Jerry, whenever you're ready.
Okay, this is for the approval of text amendment two zero 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 seven. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beck, yes.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Okay, moving on to the next public hearing item is item four point two, Comprehensive Plan Amendment two zero zero, zero two, to amend the twenty forty Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan to adopt the Thirty-third and Cornhusker Subarea Plan. Amendments to the Comprehensive Plan include adding reference to both plans in Chapter Twelve, updating the future land use map, updating the mixed-use redevelopment nodes map, updating the commercial centers map, and various updates to Chapter Ten to conform with associated amendments to the Long Range Transportation Plan. The subarea plan is generally bounded by North Twenty-seventh Street and Dead Man's Run on the west, Superior Street on the north, North Forty-eighth Street on the east, and the properties immediately south, the Cornhusker Highway on the south. And the project area is approximately five hundred ninety acres. Staff recommendation is for approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed?
I don't see any. Mr. Barnes?
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Paul Barnes with the Planning Department. Before you, we have an amendment to the twenty forty Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan. This is to incorporate the Thirty-third and Cornhusker Subarea Plan. As you may recall, this application was originally submitted before you in twenty eighteen and was unanimously recommended for approval by this body. But before city council action was final, we withdrew the application in order to reevaluate the roadway alignment, that is, the RTSD project-led portion of this. The subarea plan with this application includes the updated street alignment that's been discussed over the last couple of years, and minor map updates to match that alignment, some text updates, but otherwise, the content is more or less the same that was brought before you previously. I'll also note that the subarea plan details were presented before you at the Planning Commission briefing on November eighteenth. So I have some highlights of the plan that I'll go over, as well as some public outreach items. And then I'll turn it over to Chris Humphrey to give you a brief update on the RTSD project. The subarea plan overall covers an area from about Twenty-seventh to Forty-eighth Street, including properties just south of Cornhusker Highway and the railroad, and properties north to Superior Street. There are two main components of the subarea plan. One is an analysis of the existing physical conditions, the demographics and economic conditions. And the second part is really outlining the short and longer-term recommendations for land use, development and redevelopment, transportation improvements, economic development, and aesthetic enhancements. A main component of the subarea plan is the future land use plan. I want to note that the, the future land use plan is used as a guide and that in no way by adopting or recommending approval of this subarea plan does that change zoning or property rights that exist today. However, zoning may change over time as development and redevelopment occurs within the subarea. But the plan does create or recommend creating a mixed-use environment. It does support a range of housing types and sizes throughout the subarea, prioritizes nodal development at key intersections, provides additional access to green space, establishes transition zones between differing land uses, recommends development of new guidelines for development, and also conserves the Salt Creek Flood Plain in this area. A complement to the subarea plan is the Corridor Enhancement Plan. And the Corridor Enhancement Plan is a document that identifies potential opportunities within the public right-of-way and also makes some recommendations in terms of design standards on private property. Now, action today is not on the Corridor Enhancement Plan. The Corridor Enhancement Plan would be used as an internal decision-making document. And any further changes to design standards or any other materials would have to come forward for a separate approval process. In terms of outreach, I'll speak to this in two parts. We had some pre-two thousand nineteen outreach that was rather extensive. And this began with the Planning and Environmental Linkages Study that was completed in two thousand and sixteen. There was also an advisory committee that was established of over fifty stakeholders from both the public and private sectors. Monthly meetings with the advisor, advisory committee were held throughout the planning process. There were three public open houses, a design charrette, and a visioning session, as well, as well as an online survey with over a hundred and fifteen completed surveys. The project has also included a website where all material has been posted, as well as a social media campaign with detailed information about the process. Since we were last here before you, additional outreach has taken place. There have been numerous one-on-one stakeholder meetings with business and property owners, residents, local community leaders, as well as the public at large. The advisory committee has been engaged ongoing throughout this process as well. There were two meetings in May two thousand and nineteen and May two thousand and twenty. Updates have been provided periodically outside of those meetings as well. We did hold another meeting with the advisory committee just before the briefing with this body on November seventeenth. with this body on November 17th. There was a public scoping meeting held in June 2019 as part of the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA process. There was a second public meeting scheduled in 2020 for June, but of course, that was canceled due to COVID and our pandemic. So there were separate outreach efforts to impacted stakeholders, businesses, and property owners that directed a lot of that communication to the website for additional information. I'll, I'll just restate that the revised alignment is now included in the subarea plan, and that alignment has been discussed with impacted property owners in the area of the subarea. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris Humphrey, who's going to give you a brief update on the RTSD project, and then I'll come back to wrap it up and answer any questions you have.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Chris Humphrey, the RTSD project manager, and I'm just going to give you a brief overview of what we're working on right now. Currently, we're working towards our 60% plan submittal. That'll be submitted in the first part of next year. And we are also currently working on our environmental document, and we will have public hearing on that, most likely fall of 2021. After that public hearing, we'll be able to address those public comments, and then circle back for reviews with appropriate agencies, and then the final environmental document would be signed in 2022. We're continuing to work with, in, in coordination with the other projects in the area, like the Dead Man's Run project and a couple of local city projects, and it's, the project's currently on schedule for 2026 construction.
So lastly, I'll just note that, as Chris mentioned, the RTSD project will continue on its own schedule to be developed with construction in a few years. I want to note also that the subarea plan is flexible, and it's designed to respond to future changes. So if there is an additional change in the RTSD project or alignment, that can be made and reflected in the subarea plan. It's also important to note that both of these projects, although closely coordinated over the last four years or so, they can remain independent and on their own path. So by adopting the subarea plan, that does not dictate in one way or another, you know, this is the final alignment for the RTSD project, that will continue to move forward on its own path. So with that, I'll answer any questions of the commission.
I really have a question for Chris. Chris, if I remember right, the funding was, or the cost to do that project at, at the railroad tracks and such, was pretty expensive.
Right.
Where do we stand as far as money being set aside for, for that?
Well, currently, we have a memo of understanding between us, or between the RTSD, the State of Nebraska, NDOT, and BNSF. By Code of Federal Regulations, there's a certain amount that the railroad has to contribute, and then the remaining funds would be split between local RTSD funds, federal funds, some state funds, and then we'll also be going after some grants. And those grants, since we, we're not going to be constructing the project till 2026, we have some time. I think there's most likely going to be, we're hoping that there'll be some additional federal grants that come out under the different packages, potentially some stimulus money. And so we'll be taking a look to see what we can get. And then we also do get 1.5% of the Lincoln on the Move funds as well.
So you think you're on target then to get?
Yeah, once we have the 60% plan submitted and we have the cost estimate updated for that, we'll have, you know, a lot better idea. I'm sure you guys have read in the paper about the construction costs, like with the East Beltway and other things, you know, we're keeping our eye on that, see what inflation's doing. That creates a little bit of a snag in some things, you know, especially when you're predicting a project this far out. But once we have that 60% submittal, we'll be able to start sitting down with the railroad and with NDOT and getting those agreements more solidified in terms of the funding.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you both very much.
Mm-hmm.
Appreciate it. At this point in time, we will take any testimony from the public, any testimony in support? I see none. Any testimony in opposition? I also see none. Do we have any other questions at all for staff before we proceed? All right, very good.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Shear.
Jerry, when you're ready?
Okay, Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
And then I would move that we approve Comprehensive Plan Amendment 20002.
Second, Joy.
Comments?
I think from our briefing that we had on this area, this makes a lot of sense to get it coordinated with what they actually are doing.
Dennis?
Yeah, I, I just want to add, in terms of context, we unanimously approved, as Paul said, this plan previously, and the change that has, or the changes that have been made are actually great improvements. So I'm obviously, I think we all, well, I shouldn't speak for other commissioners, but I'm going to support this because I think it's an improvement over something we've already approved, so.
I just want to commend the, everyone that's been involved in the project, the, the transparency, the information that's online about the pro, I mean, it's just extraordinary information, the level of detail, the, just the information about all that goes into this. I think it's a great resource for the community and allows us to keep track and, and understand what's going on as we move forward, knowing that it's a many-years process before we, we see it in fruition. I mean, the, the amount of planning and work that's gone in is, is quite extraordinary, and I appreciate the, the efforts that went into making the public understand what it, what's involved. So thank you.
All right, very good. Jerry?
Okay, this is for the approval of Comprehensive Plan Amendment 20002. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Please note that we are suspending the opportunity for anyone wishing to speak on an item, not on the agenda until further notice. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn. Edgerton?
Second, Campbell.
Jerry?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
We are adjourned.